Okay, folks, we have the time here at 6:10 PM. We're gonna call the meeting to order. If you go ahead and stand with me, we're in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the purpose of the meeting is a special meeting to discuss the JED with municipalities at this time. Mr. Hees, would you like to call the rule?
Mr. Raymert.
Here.
This is Reed.
Here.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
All are present.
Okay, last time when we closed out the meeting of the JED discussion, we had several takeaways that we were gonna get in touch with our legal counsel. And Mr. Walsley has done that. He sent the email to Ms. Brenda at Dinsmore and Shaw. And she has come back with a response on those questions. And tonight, we'll cover those items. Brenda, I have several of the questions that we need to proceed with, but I thought it may be best to turn it over to you if you felt like you had a specific sequence of things that you wanted to cover. If you're not prepared to do that, I'm happy to cover a bunch of open items that I have from the last meeting.
No, go ahead. I'm here to answer your questions as they come up. So proceed as you will.
Okay, no problem. So, last meeting, we had questions regarding the term of the JED, how it would renew, the tax rate that we would use to make sure we'd be in compliance, the contributions needed from the different municipalities, and then the split of tax revenue. As mentioned, Mr. Walsley sent those questions over. I won't read all the questions and responses, but it seems like everything that we assumed is pretty much in line with the responses that we got from Brenda. And so there was no broad things that need to change from the progress we made during the last meeting. I think what I have, and Brian, keep it honest, is we need to probably work through the term piece first. There's some options we have there. Brenda provided us flexibility, I think, to set this up in several different ways. So we probably need to talk through that. And then the next thing is, after the term, I think she confirmed that we can use the 1.25% tax rate from year six onward. So that's okay. We'll have to determine if Mr. Lamb got any more information on potentially Farmersville administering it, so we can cover the tax administration tonight. And then I think it's mostly, what are the next steps beyond this? Because everything else that we've done today, it seems like it is sufficient so far. So I guess I'll start with term. Unless, Mr. Walsley, you have anything else to add? If you think that that's a fair place to start. You're on mute.
I think that's a good place to start. You know, I think the question last time around was how we go about renewing it. So, one of the questions was, is this the JED board or is this the councils and the trustees? If we want to force a vote to renew it every 10 years, it would have to pass all four entities. So I think her recommendation was automatic renewals, but she wanted to make sure that all parties were okay with that. So yeah, I guess we'll leave it at that and go from there.
Yeah, and I know everyone may have not had an opportunity to read this, but there's quite a bit of stuff regarding the term and how it would renew. So I guess I'll try to just summarize it, and feel free to anybody else that's read this in detail to add, and especially Brenda, clarity. But the term, the 99 years that we had discussed last meeting is not necessarily a JED stipulation. It's more of contract laws, the way Brenda described it, that you don't set up contracts in perpetuity. And so 99 years is considered, you know, as far as you can make a contractual term. So it was a question of, how do we set this thing up to potentially live in perpetuity? And I guess what it could be is, we could set it up in 10-year terms with eight or nine renewal periods to last, you know, 90 or 100 years after the first initial 10-year period. So you can set it up that way. I think that's what everyone intended last meeting, is for us to set up 10-year renewal terms. Now the question is, do we want to make it a passive renewal, where it's auto-renews? Or do we want to make it where it has to be an affirmative renewal, where we have to have votes? I think the question we had last time was, is there a JED board that has representatives from the municipalities and the community to represent the JED? Are they the ones that get the vote? What I read from Brenda is, it's not the JED board that actually gets the vote. It's the municipalities all have to vote. So all four municipalities would have to agree, if we set it up, that there needs to be a vote to renew. And so I guess where I see, and I'll leave it up to everyone else. I'll try to just narrate this, and then I can give my support at the end. But at this point, I guess I'd open it up for anybody that has strong opinions on whether it needs to auto-renew for 10-year renewal periods, or if they feel that we need to set up a vote by all four municipalities. One thing I'll add to it, and again, other people can add color, is if we set it up to where each municipality needs to vote, if for some reason, let's say, three of the four municipalities voted for it to continue, and one municipality voted for it not to continue, that municipality would fall out of the JED agreement at that point. And the JED would continue to exist for the other three municipalities, assuming that Germantownship was still involved in it in at least one city, or the village of Farmersville, or Germantown. Because you have to have, you know, one city plus Germantownship to continue. So as long as those two entities existed, they could continue on, and the other ones could drop out. So that's the only slight benefit. I don't know that it's a benefit.
That kind of depends. Sorry to interrupt, it's Brenda. So if you set it up for automatic renewals, where parties have to object to the renewal in order for it to stop, otherwise it would automatically renew, then you could have provisions in there that permit certain parties to leave the JED at any time. Not necessarily at a renewal time, but at any time. So, for instance, Jackson Township could leave the JED at any time, and you could put language into the agreement that says, you know, they could withdraw from the contract at any time without affecting the enforceability and the validity of the contract as it relates to the remaining parties. You could also put language in that says either Germantown or Farmersville could leave the JED at any time, but not both of them. And once one of them left, the other no longer has the right to leave in a manner that would leave the JED in place. Because, you know, as we've discussed, Germantownship is critical since the property is in their township. They cannot leave and have the JED continue. And at least one municipality has to remain. So what I suggest is, if you decide on automatic renewals, that we add some language that says, you know, parties could leave under those circumstances. Jackson Township could decide to leave at any time, provide notice. The contract would continue for the other three parties. Similarly, if, you know, Farmersville or Germantown wanted to leave, they could decide to do that, but the other municipality must stay in in order for the JED to survive. If you set it up that all of the parties have to take affirmative action to effectuate a renewal, if somebody does not take action, one of the four that is still party to the agreement at the time that term or renewal comes up, then it would be over for everybody. So if you have an automatic renewal situation, then somebody could decide to leave without affecting everybody. But if it is set up for affirmative renewal, then everybody's gotta be in at that time of the renewal. Which is not to say that somebody couldn't exit, you know, at a five-year mark. But at the 10-year mark, everybody's gotta be in again for the renewal, or it fails according to the terms. So that's why I suggest that potentially automatic renewal is the most commonly used provision. But you don't have to choose that.
Yeah, I mean, just to make it simple, I think it sounds like the evergreen is the simplistic approach. So I'm okay with that. Everyone else can give their opinion.
I mean, I am, for sure, okay with it continuing. Because if an entity wants out, they still have the option to get out if that's what they see best for their constituents. So I'm fine with it auto-continuing.
Yeah, it's fine. Mr. Lamb? Okay. Our box is in front of some of our participants. I'm not sure, is anyone on from Jackson Township tonight? No, I don't see. It's okay, I just don't know if anybody's... You can scroll the participant list or something, maybe? Okay, so Brian, I know you suggested... So it sounds like the auto-renewal, Brenda, is the path that we would want to go down. I think it does make sense to have some kind of carve-out or opt-out or whatever. But I guess I would probably have a preference of, you know, within one year of renewal, that those discussions take place. It kind of puts it on a drumbeat rather than just at any given time to be revisiting those. But I don't know if that's a normal or common call that you guys would put into it.
Well, if you put it on automatic renewal, there is a provision that says it will automatically renew unless, you know, parties notify the other parties within 180 days that they want to, you know, terminate the contract, that they don't want it to automatically renew. So there is a way to stop it at any 10-year mark if, you know, one or more parties want to, you know, have it stop for everybody at that time. But if nobody takes any action 180 days prior to, then it would continue on and automatically renew. So there is a triggering there that gives people the option to look at it and say, do we want to do anything? But if they don't do anything, it will automatically renew. As opposed to, it'll automatically stop if you don't do anything, unless everybody takes action to renew.
Okay. I'd say let's just document that we're looking for auto-renewal then, with that 180-day opt-out notice, which seems to be the standard approach. If everyone's satisfied there, we can move on to the rate discussion. Okay. So on the rate, you know, the question was just to confirm that we could have a 1.25% rate from year six and beyond, even though Germantown's at a 1.5% income tax rate, and Farmersville's at a 1%. She confirmed we can do that. Generally, and I'm summarizing here, paraphrasing, so correct me again, Brenda, but generally, the collecting entity has the same rate, and so they'll use like the same schedule. But there's nothing saying that we can't have a separate schedule if Farmersville was to collect and administer the tax to have the JED at 1.25% when Farmersville's only at 1%. The point was that we need to just make sure we're in compliance with Chapter 718 of the ORC related to municipal income tax. So I'll pause there on income tax rate. I think we're all still aligned to that. Is there any questions for Brenda on that one? Okay, it doesn't appear like there's any questions for you, Mr. Lamb?
It's Brenda, and I'll just clarify. So yes, the JED agreement will set out that the rate is 1.5, and then it drops to 1.25 at the six-year mark. However, the critical document will be the resolution that is actually passed by the JED board once the JED is formed and the board is seated. The JED board has to adopt an income tax resolution. And so we will need to make sure that that language about rate for this five years, and then changing to this rate, is in the income tax resolution. The other thing that we put into the JED agreement would be language that says, should, you know, the rate for either of the municipalities, well, actually, for both of the municipalities fall below the rate that is currently being charged under the income tax resolution. So let's say we're in year seven, and the rate is 1.25. Let's just, you know, say, worst-case scenario, Germantown decides to drop their income tax to 1%. Now Farmersville's at 1%, and Germantown's at 1%, so the JED has to automatically fall to 1%. It cannot be higher than either of the municipalities at any time during the life of the JED, not just when it is started. So there will be language in the JED contract that says it will automatically fall. Similarly, it will automatically fall if, for instance, Germantown, who currently has the higher rate, drops out of the JED agreement. If Farmersville is still in, so you still have a municipality, but your income tax rate is gonna have to fall to the 1% being collected by Farmersville, because they're now the only municipality. So there will be language in there that says decreases in the rate are automatic in order to keep it compliant with the JED statute rules. Increases, let's say Germantown or Farmersville raises their income tax rate to, you know, 1.75. The JED board would have to take action to actually increase the rate. It would decrease automatically if it was not in compliance with the statute. But just because one of the municipalities increased their rate, the JED rate would not change without further action.
So that's clear. I think the takeaway here, that I, first time for me hearing, is the JED board has the ability to change the tax rate within the time period that the JED is active. Like it's up to the JED board at that point.
Right.
Okay. Well, I think all I'm just trying to point out for everyone involved is that, you know, for us to end this, or if we set it up where it wasn't auto-renewed, it would take all four municipalities to vote on it. But for the income tax rate piece of it, you're saying that's a JED board decision?
Correct. Now, the agreement will be set out that it's supposed to be 1.5 for the first five years, and then it will fall. So that is what will happen unless and until the JED board takes other action and passes a different income tax resolution at the JED board level.
Okay, clear. Any other questions on rate? I guess at this point, Mr. Lamb, do you have any other discussion for you guys administering it?
Yes, I do have a question for Brenda on the rate first. Do we just make that 1.25% rate period start at an event? I know we discussed in a couple meetings previous. Can we just have that start at occupancy?
Well, that's sort of up to you. As you all know, occupancy is a moving target and a, you know, you have to define it, because it means something different to other people. The email sort of indicated five years and five years. So, you know, you could put a date in there that says it'll be this amount through this, you know, date, and then it changes. Or you can put in a triggering event, but just beware that that is a little bit harder to define than a solid date.
The only reason I was asking is because I know that the intent was to make it during the construction period. So I don't know the best way to do it. I was just thinking because of that. And then Tyler, to your question, yeah, talk to council about it. Farmersville is definitely interested. I guess at this point, how do we go about this? Do we just put in a bid?
Well, it's really, you know, the parties here sort of decide who's going to administer. And then after the JED board passes the income tax resolution, the JED board enters into an income tax administrator agreement between the JED and one of the municipalities.
Brian, did you happen to get any information from your current agency on that?
I did. So we started, and let's see, it probably would have been 2016, maybe? Our first year, we were at 2%. So they based their fee, that would be 2% of collected revenue.
Right.
Collected income tax. So they based their fee on the number of contacts. So because of our slight controversy where we changed the credit, then we changed it back, and we eliminated a new income tax, there was a lot of contact spread out over those two years. So our rate actually jumped up to 3.97 right now. We are hoping that once those contacts die off, the rate should drop back down. So I would assume for the JED, you're looking probably at a max of 3.9. Probably a min, I think their min fee was around 2% of total collected revenue.
Okay. Yeah, but to be honest, we just, obviously, we're not in business. So we just don't know where to start.
Right.
And that's something that is generally in the contract, not the administrator contract, but actually in the JED agreement, is, you know, how much are you setting aside off the top to pay for the income tax administration? There's usually a percent put in there. Anywhere from 2% to 5% is normal. That's not to say it can't be higher than 5%. But typically, the JED agreement has an amount in there of 2% to 5% is set aside for income tax administration.
So let's just use a generic example and shame on me. I didn't print out the tax split I sent after our last meeting that was kind of the aligned one. Have you got it handy there?
That was our yearly of what we would get.
So I'm looking at it, and year six through 10, it looks like a estimate of somewhere, let's call it $125,000 to $150,000 of tax revenue is the estimate on a going basis. So let's just say if we did 4% of that, it's $5-ish thousand, Mr. Lamb. So two things. Number one, would that be reasonable for what you expect or what your administrator would expect? Or does that seem like you guys wouldn't be able to do it for that? Or you just need to discuss that? So it's just a ballpark figure of $5,000. The other thing I would say is, this may not be as funny to you, but since we have four municipalities participating to pay for it, you would have to pay 1/4 of that call. So you might not receive the $5,000. You might only receive, you know, $3,500 after you pay your portion of it. So I guess that's...
Yeah, we had talked about that. That was one of the questions that council had was, would we pay for that at our split?
It usually comes off the top. So you usually take the first half a percent, the first, because there's a small percentage that also has to go to the JED board itself to pay for its, you know, insurance and audit fees and et cetera. And usually, that number is around a half a percent. So they take the first half percent, and it stays in the JED board account. And then the next 2, 3, 4, 5% is sent to whomever is, you know, administering the income tax, usually one of the municipalities. And then you take the rest of it, so, and then you split it according to your percentages. So it's the net amount after those two distributions that you're then splitting 35, 35, 15, 15. Or whatever you finally decide on. Those were the tentative splits that were sent to me last week.
Okay. Mr. Lamb, what do you think about that percentage?
That would be something I just have to put in front of them. Again, we didn't know what to expect here, so...
Yeah, and I think you guys...
Again, I think it just boils to necessarily, you know, a revenue-making activity for us. It's just, if we can handle it, then yeah, we're good to go.
Yeah, I think that's probably the other thing, right? You probably have to estimate how many returns you'd be processing because of this.
Yeah, again, yeah.
Well, and that's the other thing you have to factor in, is refunds. And refunds are set up all different across the board. In some cases, anticipated refunds are included in that, you know, off-the-top amount that goes to the administrator, and they're supposed to pay their cost of collecting and refunds. In other cases, there's a separate set aside that says OGs, and, you know, 5% of the money will be set aside for anticipated refunds. To the extent that there are no refunds, that money will get distributed at the end of the year according to the, you know, 35, 35, 15, 15 split. Or you don't reserve any money for refunds, but then the parties have to kick back in if there are refunds that have to be paid. Each of the four entities has to come up with the refund amount. After you've gotten your distributions, you have to give back. So you have to think about how you want to handle refunds and what you think of. You might anticipate in terms of refunds on that. So I don't really know, you know, what you might be expecting, given that you have, you know, a single employer where, you know, the school employees generally... Right, generally, COVID notwithstanding, they're generally working on-site. And so I don't know what kind of refund situation there might be. But keep that in mind. You need to be prepared to deal with it either off-the-top or an additional set aside or recoupment after the fact.
To that point, Brenda, do we need to iron out these fine details now? Or is it more of us carving out the broad? Or is this needed now because you're gonna have to include this in what you're writing up?
Yep. It's gotta be in the agreement.
Okay. So like issues like this, I think, can you just bring them up as we're on that topic? Let's try to nail them out now on how we handle for refunds. I mean, this is a school public employee. Most of it's W-2 wages, right? There's going to be, obviously, different exceptions to that rule. But for the most part, this should be pretty straightforward collection of the 1.25% year six and beyond on a teacher's salary wages or a school employee wages, where it should be pretty straightforward. Everyone's fully withheld, and not a lot on the refund situation. But with that said, like I said, I know there's exceptions. So I guess I would be looking for a simplistic approach to that. Brenda, I mean, what's your thoughts based on that circumstance?
Well, again, I mean, my thoughts are typically, your refund situation is, you know, where you've got a corporate employer, and, you know, employee is having their withholdings done at their corporate office. But then, oh, by the way, at the end of the year, they submit paperwork and say, "But I was in Atlanta for six months out of the year, so I'm not paying the income tax to the JED for the six months that I was in Atlanta." Now, you know, that's highly unlikely for the school employees. Although, you know, there is this current unusual pandemic situation that we're in, and we all hope we're never in another one. But there's also, you know, a lawsuit proceeding through the court system about whether or not you can continue to tax employees who are working from home as if they're still working in their corporate office. And we don't know what will happen with that law. And we don't know what will happen with that lawsuit or, you know, income tax law, the way we all know it and think it operates currently. It could change. But that's the situation, you know. Otherwise, in a normal pre-pandemic environment, I would not expect that there would be a great deal of potential refunds from school employees who are generally on-site every day. Unless, again, you were dealing with, you know, a big urban district where they're like, well, I'm at this building, you know, 2/3 of the year, and I'm at this building 1/3 of the year. So, you know, I'm not paying you 100%. Again, if they're moving all the buildings to that campus, you're not going to have that situation very often either.
Yeah. So I, I mean, at the end of the day, keep this simple. At the end of the, it's just the timing of when we actually get the money distributed to the municipalities. If we leave some reserve in there for tax refunds, I don't think we should, any of us should have a problem with that, right? It's just timing of when the distributions occur to us, correct?
Right. Because if you end up, if you say, oh, reserve another 5% for refunds, then there would be a clause in there that says, to the extent there's any money in the refund pot after January, you know, 30th or whatever the last date is they can apply for refunds, then it gets distributed back to all of the participating entities.
I'll just propose to you guys that we reserve 10% of the tax revenue collected until after the April 15 deadline. The only concern I have there, Brenda, is we have extensions through October, right? So, I mean, do you need to reserve another small piece for that? Or what happens if we owe money back in October that's already been distributed?
Well, you'll start another refund pot each year. So, you know, if you distribute on April 30th because, you know, people filed by April 15 and you figured out who owes, who does or doesn't have a refund, and, you know, you used, you know, a 10th of the 10% and you redistributed the other nine, arguably, the next year's pot already started in January. So you already have four months of the 10% sitting there for the next fiscal year that if you happen to have a refund claim in October, you just use the new pot, make it, move on, redistribute in April. Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough. So I guess I'll suggest that 10% to be distributed. And I'll call it May 15. That would give whoever administers it one month after the tax deadline to try to estimate how much money is remaining after refunds and final collections to distribute that.
Hey Brenda, is that a rate that can be adjusted? So if the JED Board figures out that they're only, they're hitting 1% refunds every year, can the JED Board drop that from 10 to whatever is more realistic after a few years?
We can add language in there that would then, yeah, allow the JED Board to adjust that by resolution.
In reality, it's like any other cash flow event, though. It's only an impact in year one. From that point forward, if you do it on the same, it's the same every single year. So I understand. I just don't want to make this thing too complex, you know, to where JED can get around fiddling with that to, you know, distribute money sooner and then put pressure on the administrator and all that kind of stuff. So I'm okay with going 5% if we want to do that. The only thing I would say, and I think to Brenda's point, we'll still already be collecting January through April. So there should be money enough. If we only leave 5% and we had to distribute back 6% refunds, we could use some of that current year pot. The point is, it becomes more of a reconciliation issue because the next year, you're not going to be able to distribute everything you collected for that tax year because some of that tax collection went for prior year's refunds. You see what I'm saying? So I just, I would be in a place where 10% would, should be very sufficient for something like the situation with our employers that we have in that JED district. And let's just make sure that we have it covered before we distribute it. Anybody have thoughts?
I think the money in the end comes back, so.
Right. At 10%, there's no issue. I don't see. The money just could come a little later, and that's fine.
I'm fine. I'm fine with it.
All right. Brenda, is that one satisfied?
Okay. I know what I need to draft.
Uh, any other questions on rates? And Nick, I guess, just rough ballpark, what we, what we, I'm guessing, unless someone has other math, around $5,000 a year would be around that, you know, 4% administration. I guess just check back. And do you need any more numbers on how many employees or returns or anything like that to try to get to a better place on deciding if you can administer?
If we have a general ballpark idea, that would be helpful.
I think we could ask Mr. Richards, you know, of how many school employees there are. So we'll take that as a follow-up.
I'll just, I'll just take that action.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's at 200.
That's what I recall at some point. That might not be exact, so maybe follow up anyways. But I thought it was right around 200.
The challenging part, Nick, for you guys is going to be this construction phase. And not that you want to go out there and aggressively go after these guys, but, you know, you do want to make sure that the multitude of companies that are working out there are aware of the income tax laws. And so it may be a challenging five years. And after that, everything should calm down.
Brenda, you can give us some experience on this, but couldn't we, you know, have some kind of discussion with the school about the JED and when they're bidding out these jobs? Like, that's got to be something that's included as they're bidding these jobs?
Well, so, yes, there was a follow-up question about, you know, taxing the construction workers. So let's just jump right into that. Yes, the school district has to provide a petition and agree to be in the JED. And the reason for that is because, you know, they already own that property. They're operating a business there. There was no taxing entity when they decided to locate there. So you need their permission to impose a tax on them that wasn't there when they decided to locate and operate a business there. The future businesses don't have to consent because once the JED is in place, they know. I mean, they're on notice. It's there. If you don't want to pay the income tax, don't move your business into the JED. Don't buy property in the JED. If you are a construction worker, you know, contractor, and you don't want to have to pay the tax, don't bid on the job. So, yes, you know, it ought to be a discussion that you have with the, you know, school district to make sure that they are letting the contractors know that a JED will be in place before they start work and that, you know, income tax will be applicable. It's probably not that big of a deal for the contractors because they don't choose to bid on a project based on whether it's in a township or in a city. You know, if the school wants to build a school, they don't really care where it is. They want the job. Similarly, you know, there's a fire station to be built. They don't really care where, whether it's in a city or a township who charges income tax or doesn't. But they ought to let them know. And then, to your point, it is going to be somewhat of an administrative, you know, burden because it's harder to keep track of all those construction workers. And the same income tax rules that apply to the municipalities will apply in the JED in terms of, you know, they have to be there for a certain number. You know, if they come in and do three days of work, you're not taxing them. They have to be there for the minimum number of days in order for the tax to affect them. And that's, you know, a lot of work to keep track of who's actually working for the requisite number of days and getting that withheld or paid to the JED. So you can tax the construction workers, but it's not easy. But then again, it's the same as any other construction project happening in any other municipality that has an income tax.
Okay. Any other questions on the tax rate or administration? Okay. On the split, last time, we had agreed to a 35, 35, 15, 15 split. Are we all still aligned to that? Is everyone okay there? Okay.
Tyler? Farmersville, Jackson Township are good with a 30% total. We may work out a sub-split in there, and we'll have an answer within a week. That's something we've been talking about.
Okay. So we may have that one, Brenda, to follow up on. But I, maybe that's something we can do by email there from both of those entities.
Yeah, the...
Trying to look here.
Yeah, Brian indicated that may change, but that we'll start with that, and then they can let us know if we need to adjust that.
Okay, Brian, I don't know if there's anything else in the split. I can't recall from reading it tonight. I mean, you got some stuff on initial fees, but I think we already covered that more in the previous piece. Good. I guess, Brenda, do you, you need, I guess, while we're talking about the splits and the rates and all that, we need to go ahead and say, let's withhold, you know, 2% off the top for the insurance, audit fees, whatever else, 4% for the tax administration?
Right, we have to pick those percentages. I mean, I can put numbers into the initial draft that gets circulated, and you can tweak them later. Or we can, you know, have that discussion now. I mean, I will put placeholders in there if you don't decide right now what to put in there. But we will have to finalize them before we can start the public hearing process.
I mean, preliminarily, I think we all should have the objective that we withhold enough that it covers all the expenses and then everything on a going basis can be distributed beyond that. So, I mean, I guess you get, your experience is what we would defer to. I guess what you talked is 1% to 2% for the insurance and other miscellaneous. I, let's do the 2% on the tax administration. Let's put a placeholder in there, 4% for now, and let Nick have the discussion. Is there any other things that we need? You've got the 10% reserve on the refunds. Is there any other things we need to account for?
No. In terms of the income tax, that, those are the items. The admin fee, the amount that stays with the JED, how to deal with refunds, and then the distribution of the bulk of the money. So I think we've covered all of those. And in terms of, you know, how much is customary for the JED Board to keep is 2%, you know, the normal amount? Well, you know, as you know, that really depends on the size of the JED and the amount of payroll coming in and the amount of taxes because your insurance and, you know, your audit fees and stuff are more of a sort of fixed number based on the service as opposed to the size of your JED and the amount it's collecting. So for one JED to cover those bills may be a smaller percentage than another JED because they're not collecting as much income tax. This one's collecting more. That one's a little bit harder to say this percentage is the right number. You really kind of have to figure out what those costs might look like on an annual basis and then back it into your expectation of revenue to figure out what the percentage is.
I mean, just out of curiosity, why wouldn't it be written that any fees that the JED incurs, such as X, Y, and Z, are immediately paid from collected revenues before any distributions for the going year?
Because you don't, I mean, those fees don't all come in. So in other words, your insurance gets billed once a year. But you're collecting money for, you know, the whole, every month. So you're not going to distribute any money until the end of the year or until after the insurance premiums are paid. I mean, it just, that kind of depends on what your policy cycle is. And then similarly with your audit fees, because you're a public entity, you have to get an audit through the state. When they charge you and when that invoice, who knows? I mean, you know, the state auditor's office all over the board in timing sequence. And so if you say, we're not going to distribute any money until we get, then you've got a situation of, okay, well, now, nobody's getting any money because we haven't gotten the invoice from this person or that person versus set aside a certain percentage so that you expect to have the money to pay it when the invoice comes. But again, it's a, it's sort of like throwing a dart at the board. You don't know at what point in the year you'll have collected enough money to pay the invoice out of the part you reserve. And so there is usually a provision in there that says, to the extent that the JED Board has expenses beyond what's in its pot, each of the contributing entities has to pony up according to their distribution split.
Yeah, I mean, I want to keep it simple. We're collecting these taxes throughout the year. I mean, if you write in the contract that the invoices, expenses incurred by the JED are due payable on invoice receipt, and those take precedent before any distributions, you could still continue to distribute the collected taxes as they come in. And if a bill comes in, you pay it first and then distribute what's remaining for each month or quarter or whatever. But like I said, I defer to you on this one, but I would think you would be able to set it up that way to make it more simple than a percentage. To your point, that we don't know how much this thing's going to collect for sure. We don't know how much the expenses are going to be for sure. It seems like writing it, and we pay it.
Yeah. And you could, you could say, you could, the statute requires that there be some percentage allocated to the JED. So you could put in a provision that says, you know, half a percent to the JED and then add in language that says, any invoices that come in are to be paid within 30 days from the receipt before distributions are made to the extent that the amount in the JED account is not sufficient to cover them.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think I like that provision. And I would just say, if we went with maybe more like a, I mean, again, back to $125,000 is a rough estimate of collections per year. If we put something like a 4%, similar to the administration, you have $5,000 in that account. I would hope that would cover most of the expenses, but then we could add that verbiage that you say. So we intend to, you know, set aside $5,000 a year. And then if it does exceed that, then we'll just have to pay that upon invoice receipt before any distributions are made.
Okay.
Tyler, I've got a suggestion. Maybe to keep it simple, and to your point earlier, that really, year one is the biggest challenge, right? Because you may not have it in there yet. Should we just all start by putting an amount in a fund for the JED?
Well, yeah. So generally, you do. So generally, that is something that you estimate what your initial expenses are going to be. And you allocate a contribution from each to pay those initial expenses for that first year because it is going to be, yeah, a while before it ramps up and revenue starts to flow. So we've discussed that in this case, because in prior discussions, we've had such difficulty coming up with contributions for each and every party that the contribute, the legally required contribution from each party can be cash. And so it can be cash to pay for the setup fees as well as the expected, you know, first year, you know, expenses of the JED Board.
And I'm sure it goes probably without saying, but contributions for expenses will match the revenue split, correct, Brenda?
They can. They don't have to, but they can.
Give us just a second, guys. We have to reconnect to the call.
All right, I think we're back. Can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there. Uh. Brenda, you were saying something there when we lost you. We couldn't hear you, you tailed off a second. Do you recall where you were at there?
Uh, somebody asked if the contribution to pay the initial expenses would be the same as the distribution of the income tax. And I said, it can be if that's what you want. It doesn't have to be, but it can be.
Okay. If anybody doesn't have any other objection, I think that makes sense. I mean, if Jackson Township's only getting fifty percent of the revenue, it doesn't make sense for them to pay twenty-five percent of the contributions or fees, so.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, I think we've kind of came to the end. Brian, I'll, I'll give you an opportunity if there's any other things you recall from the note. Otherwise, at this point, I know, wanted to get into discussing like next steps, but I'm sure Brenda, you might have some open items, other things we need to discuss. So that was kind of the end of my list, Brian.
I'm going back through the questions we had last time. I don't see anything that we missed.
Um. I think on the contribution fees, what, as you look at that, let's just talk that contribution. Um, we all, I think, are still aligned to contributing money. To kick this off, I think to Brenda's point, we got to cover first year expenses. Um, I, I don't know what that right amount is. Uh, Brenda, I mean, I know you said you'd bring to tonight's meeting maybe a, a amount that we maybe owe in legal fees to date. I guess to give us a general idea, if you can give us a flavor, that, Mr. Heaton, you have something?
Go ahead and finish what you're doing and then I've got a reminder for you.
So, so my, my point was, if we get a general estimate of legal fees incurred to date and maybe, uh, some kind of really rough estimate of what it may take to, to complete this. Um, and then we know that we have, you know, maybe that first year insurance, the board insurance and that, those types of things. We can kind of have a general idea of what we think we want to make the contrib, excuse me, the contribution to be. Mr. Heaton, go ahead.
At the last meeting, you were discussing how to do the public hearings. And I believe you wanted to talk to Brenda about, can they be done jointly or do they all have to be done individually?
Absolutely. That definitely needs to be discussed. Thank you. So, so Brenda, do you want to talk the, the fee? We'll talk, uh, contribution and then we'll move on to the next steps, such as Mr. Heaton's, uh, public hearing and con, contract drawing and all that type of stuff.
Okay. Um, so accord, according to the engagement letter, Brian, that I have right now with Germantown, it says, you know, I will charge whatever hourly rate, uh, not to exceed five thousand dollars without, you know, additional approval from Germantown. We have exceeded that substantially, um, the five thousand. So, you know, on the one hand, you know, you can say, well, we're not paying you any more than five thousand, or we can, uh, you know, amend the engagement letter to have a larger amount in there. At this point, um, based on time for this transaction and the hourly rate that we quoted on this, we are double that already, uh, since, since last year. We're up to around ten thousand. But, um, that doesn't mean that we have to determine that's going to be the amount because we have an engagement letter in place that captured at five thousand.
Okay.
So-
I, I think after the discussion for Germantown take offline, can, can we talk about the estimate cost to complete from here forward?
Oh, well, yeah, again, I, I think what it's going to really come down to is we're going to agree on some number that is-
Okay.
Less than what it's really going to cost because we're going to finish revising the JED agreement, get it out to the parties to start taking a look at. We'll then have to tweak things in there. You know, does the four percent seem right? Oh geez, you know, this sentence bothers me. Can we change the language around here? Uh, we need to, you know, firm up the contribution section. So there'll be an, a version that goes out because I'm not sure that anybody has seen a version except Brian, and that was months and months ago under a different scenario. So the parties will need to review it. There will be some edits to it. We will have to get exhibits together for the contract, uh, the territory description, the economic plan for the area. We have to get all those exhibits together. We've drafted the petitions. I'll just need to review those and make, uh, any updates needed to those. We've drafted, uh, bylaws, but again, we have to circulate those and people need to have a chance to comment on those. Then, uh, once the agreement and all exhibits are finalized, then you advertise for and hold the public hearings. And then after the public hearings, then each of the four entities has to adopt a resolution or ordinance, which again, we can dra, oh, the petitions for the school district get distributed after the contract is finalized before the public hearings. We have to get the school to sign off on the petition. Then we'll have to do resolutions, ordinances for each of the cities, townships to consider. Then it's thirty days before the JED agreement is effective after the last legislative action by the contracting parties. Then the JED board has to get seated and hold their first meeting, at which time they will adopt the income tax resolution and the income tax administration agreement, which still has to be drafted. So there's still work to be done. So we're just going to have to come to, you know, a number that, uh, that the parties are comfortable with. Otherwise, this is going to get really expensive. Um, and we're not really going to do that to you. So we'll, we will have an offline discussion and come to a number that seems fair to everybody.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I mean, going back to my old boss said on his hourly rate, you can make a first offering, I guess, and then we'll have to consider it. And, uh, I, I guess, you know, you guys get together and, and make your first offering. Brenda, on what you guys think is reasonable based on your experience with these types of things. Obviously, we'll have to discuss it at, at our meetings. Um, the other thing, uh, you know, you listed off several things that we have to do. I guess we can start taking through those now. Um, I guess on the, on the contribution thing, we're not going to be able to satisfy that tonight until we have a better general idea of what, what that number is along with a few of the other numbers. So I, I would prefer that if we, if we can skip over that.
Right, that's going to be a blank, that'll be a blank in the initial draft of the contract. It's, it's, and there'll be, you know, some other language in there. And then the question is, is anybody else going to commit to anything else with respect to the JED at this point in time? So that section is probably the section that's going to need the most work, um, after we get this draft out. And if everybody is contributing some monetary amount to the JED, you don't necessarily have to contribute anything else in terms of additional services and improvements, but to the extent that you're expecting to anyway, we'll add them in there. So that's the section that will probably need the most work after this next draft gets distributed.
Okay. I, 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 I mean, I'm hoping that, you know, we've made the most progress and we're ready to keep moving forward. Everyone's gotten to the, the tough term. So hopefully, we can take good use of your time now forward and it'll be quick and fruitful. So in, in, in that spirit, let's, let's keep moving with, uh, the next steps on this. So you guys will take away and, and draft a contract at this point in time along with, uh, you know, what you think the engagement fee might be, uh, to help us make some more decisions on the contribution. I guess what's the next step besides that? You said you would, uh, send out a, a draft, a contract agreement. Uh, do you think it's, each time you, you want to have communication with us, do you think we should have a public meeting to, to progress this pretty rapidly at this point? Um, I mean, when should we anticipate getting a draft contract? So maybe we set up another meeting that we have a few days to review it as individuals come in and make sure we can align on whatever the blank lines are and the, the language in that.
That's up to you, um, and maybe you want to see the first draft, uh, to decide whether you really, you know, it's just a few little things that, you know, everybody weighs in or whether you really need to have a meeting to go through it. So maybe you want to see the first draft before you decide if you need to have a meeting to deal with it. I will plan to get you a first draft next week and I will send with that an email that says, you know, here are the things that still need more work, you know, and please, you know, review the entire thing, ask any questions you have about anything in here. We can, you know, tweak other things, but here are the things that I believe are still sort of open and what we need to do with them. I will send you, you know, here's the list of the exhibits that we're still need to have provided and completed in order to do. So I'll send you a detailed what-to-do email with the draft next week and then you guys decide whether or not you need to have a meeting at that time or want to wait until, you know, the next draft or what you want to do.
Okay. Um, I, I, my suggestion is, we can make these quicker meetings, obviously, guys, but I, I feel, I feel like we should keep the momentum going. If we're going to get a draft next week, uh, which is the week of, uh, Feb. one, um, the following week, we have our normally scheduled meeting. Uh, do we want to follow it up like the, the day after that? And, uh, try to somewhere Tuesday, Wednesday. I, you can't, can you do Tuesday night? Uh, can we do something the first week of February is the question as a group? Just to, um, get together, debrief on the contract that she's drafted up, try to nail out any blank spaces that we have and keep the progress going, knowing that construction could start summer.
Can I ask, is it possible, since we are already here on the eighth, if I'm correct, and just have our JED meeting at six and then work for an hour? And then have our regular meeting? Or is that not a, we're supposed to do it two different nights?
I have the cemetery at five. So as long as there's nothing crazy.
I mean, it, it was an hour long enough. I mean, right now, we're sitting at an hour and fifteen minutes and I feel like we've gotten quite a bit done. Not that we need to rush, but.
Well, also, can some of this be hashed out? Because I feel like we've gotten, uh, progress reasonable, you know.
Does it have to be done at a, a public meeting when we know what we want? Can Tyler go and- Then you guys can meet, um, wherever, whenever. And then report back to the board.
Yeah.
So we can move a little faster in that way.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that makes sense. If you guys are okay with that, Brian, Nick, I know that's what you guys are already doing.
Exactly. We're good. Yep.
Okay.
Fine.
As long as it's you, I'm good with it.
All right. Um. Do we want to try to set up time? Brenda, if you feel pretty good that you can get it to us, you know, um, the first week there in February, you guys want to meet next, the midweek of the eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, somewhere in that range?
I should be good. I should be good most of that week.
You guys name of the evening, I'm open any ninth, tenth, eleventh.
Any night but Monday. I'm good that week too.
Okay, how about the ninth? Uh, if we did the ninth, I would have to do it at, at least six-thirty. Um, but, uh, the tenth, I could do six o'clock. The eleventh, I could do six o'clock.
We do the eleventh. Tenth doesn't work so well for me, but eleventh is a little better.
All right. Eleventh at six P.M. All right. Now, on to the next things, Brenda. So the contract, I, I guess, I don't know that we have a whole lot more besides talking to contract and the next steps beyond that, but I guess one thing that we are really interested in, everyone as a group was, and Mr. Heaton mentioned, is are, are we able to, once we get to the point of contract lined out, everyone's in agreement, now we need to take it to the public meeting? Can we do that meeting as one large group or do we need to have four individual meetings for each participant?
Yes, each legislative authority must hold a public hearing. So, so long as each of you advertise it as a, you know, joint meeting of Germantown City Council, public hearing, Farmersville Public Hearing, Germantownship, Jackson Township, you could hold one giant public meeting, but it must be noticed by each of the four and it must be clear that it is, you know, to be the public hearing for this, you know, for this city, for this city, for this township, for this township concerning the JED.
Okay, perfect. Um, clear there.
Brenda, do I, this is Marke stand. Do I recall there are actually two public hearings within a few days of each other?
I'm sorry, you cut out. Do you recall what?
Are there two public hearings that are held within a few days of each other?
Okay, legislative shall hold a public hearing, thirty days notice in a newspaper of general circulation. All following doc, and all the documents have to be available before you publish notice. So you have to know one hearing, but you have to give thirty days notice of the hearing in a newspaper, notwithstanding that no one reads them, but we have to still publish notice in the paper.
Is, is Facebook a newspaper?
No. Which is where people will read it, but no. The statute has not, you know, come into the new decade. Uh. And then the issue is, you know, at the public hearing, the, you know, any public comment and recommendations must be heard and, you know, addressed. And then if the contracting parties decide to change the contract as a result of the public hearing, then you have to have another public hearing because the contract has changed. If you get public comments and you respond to the public saying, you know, we hear your concerns and we think that, you know, section X addresses that or we've considered that, but we've decided to do why, you know, with this deal and we're not, you know, going to make any changes. We, we hear you, we understand, we've already considered that and we're not changing anything, then you move on. If however you get comments and recommendations that cause you to say, okay, well, uh, we need to change, you know, this or that, then we got to redo the contract and do another notice and another public hearing because now you're, you've changed the deal.
Okay, that, that's clear. I guess, just very brief synopsis, if we get through that hearing, the contract doesn't change. What's the next steps after that?
Okay. So, um, as I said, assuming we, we're going to line up the petitions, you know, during that period. So the petitions will be done and signed by the school. And then, uh, the statute requires you then notice any property owners who didn't already sign petitions, but since we only have one and one business, we're going to get them to sign it or we're, you know, can't move forward. So we get the petitions and then, um, you each pass your resolutions, ordinances to approve and then- the other four JED Board members appoint that fifth person.
Of the four members?
Yes.
Could we specify, sorry, Tyler, go. Could we specify that the fifth member at large is a resident of Germantown Township, for example?
No.
Okay.
No, the four, let's see. Hold on a second. One member representing one member, one member representing, if no, one member selected by the members. But it does not have to be, yeah, necessarily a resident of the township. Sometimes it's a business person. Different JEDs, you know, use different criteria, but they usually appoint a business person just to add, you know, a different perspective, like not a school employee, not a business in the JED per se, just, you know, somebody who's a member of the Chamber of Commerce or something, or, you know, not, not somebody who's an employee of any of the four contracting parties, or an elected official of any of them, but an active citizen in the community.
Okay. That's clear. On the four, and this may be the dumbest question to ask all night, but of the four, is each, like you said, the township does one, the school district does one, like for the townships and the municipality, is that supposed to be a council member and a trustee or a trustee? Or is that someone that just is representing the township, but is not an elected official?
Right. So it can be an elected official. It doesn't have to be. It's usually a staff person, so like most of, you know, the time, the city party will appoint their city manager, or their economic development director, or, you know, another staff person who's aware of what's going on in the community. It can be a trustee, you know, in the township, or a city council member in the city, but oftentimes, it's a staff member that's appointed by, the city council appoints, and they can pick one of their members, or they can say, we appoint the city manager to do this, or we appoint the, you know, finance director to sit on the board, to be on the JED Board.
Okay. I think that's clear.
But you could appoint, or you could appoint a citizen if you want. It doesn't have to be an employee or an elected official, but it usually, the municipal representative is usually an elected official or an employee of the municipality. Doesn't have to be, but it usually is. Similarly for the township. It is usually an elected official or an employee of the township. Again, the township could appoint just a random resident if they wanted to, but they generally don't. That's generally where the fifth member comes in. The fifth member is generally not an employee or an elected official of any of the parties, or necessarily the business that is in there.
Okay. One follow-up question to that is, the people appointed, do they need to live within the JED district? Within the JED district to be appointed to?
No.
Okay. Do they need, if, for a Germantown Township representative, do they need to live within Germantown Township?
Or be an employee or, well, you'd have to live there to be an elected official, but you don't necessarily have to live there to be an employee. So if you're not going to appoint an elected official or an employee, then yes, some other resident of the city for, or a business person who works in the city.
Yeah.
So not necessarily, yeah, some kind of connection, similarly for the township. And then your fifth person, as I said, is usually a resident of one of the contracting parties and/or a business owner within one of the four contracting parties.
I'm good. Okay. Any other questions from anyone else? I know I've got all my stuff covered for tonight, Brenda. We'll leave it to you, I guess, now, and if you don't have anything, then we'll just open it up to anybody else with questions. So Brenda, do you have anything else that you wanted to accomplish tonight to get the draft?
No, I, as I said, I think I've got enough to get you all a good draft with an email explaining what you need to do with that draft, and what you need to still work on, and then I'll explain, you know, the exhibits that are still needed and all of that in the email. So I think I have marching orders to get that next step done.
Okay. Thank you for joining. I know it's after hours, and appreciate the responses and emails, very clear, and appreciate that helps us move more quickly. Anybody else have any questions tonight?
Nothing here.
Okay. I didn't leave, you know, five minutes for any of our participants tonight. I'll give it a second here if there's anyone else on the call that has any contribution tonight. Okay. With that, I think we've got the next steps, and we're ready to move, so I guess at this point, make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is 7:28, and we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.